That we now have four, we have a quorum, we can go ahead and start the meeting of February 21st, 2023, 7:03 PM. I'll just run through the members that I see and just note that you're you're present. Mark?
Here.
Linda?
Here.
Sue?
Here.
And I'm Nathan Buzzer, I'm also here, we know that Haley and Andrew will not be able to join us tonight. All right, our first, bring up my phone here. Our first order of business tonight is, oh man, I had it open. Is a public hearing related to 48Y Pittsburgh Turnpike. They have requested a continuance to March, which which day was it?
Twenty first.
March 21st at 7:00 PM. For this one, we do need to take a vote for the continuance. So I will, anybody who wants to make a motion for that, I'm open to hear it.
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing until March 21st on parcel 48Y Pittsburgh Turnpike parcel number 3419.
And I will second that. And then we'll just take a quick vote. Mark?
Aye.
Linda?
Yes.
Sue?
Aye.
And I'm also a yes. All right. The second item of business or 7:05 PM bit of business, it relates to 37 Lexington Road. They have also requested a continuance or continued without discussion to March 21st. I guess we will call that, I'll stick with 7:05 PM since we just put the other one at seven?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. So I make a motion, or we don't need to do, we don't, we just need to announce it for this one, there's no need for a vote.
Correct.
So just a notification on that. And do we have? Our seven 10 business is related to 59 Walden Street. Do we have everybody who would be, I'm just looking at who we have here?
Yep. So you have a few minutes, so I don't know if you want to go to your administrative items.
Yeah, let's do that.
Minutes.
But yeah, let's knock out the, let's knock out the minutes. That shouldn't take too long. Okay, we have minutes for November 29th and December 13th. Those went out a little while ago or earlier, there yesterday.
I make a motion that we approve the amended minutes for the meeting of 11:29 and 12:13 as amended.
I wanted, you didn't have anything to throw in there?
I don't think they're.
Already amended.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know if there was any additions.
So, so Heather sent out the the minutes and then Sue provided some comments. And then they went, they went out to the board. So I think it's as written.
Okay. Want me to do it again?
Sure.
No, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Sorry, I didn't mean to, well, you've done such a good job of.
Mark was on it, he was like, let's do it.
But, but they've been read, they've been read and gone over by people better than me. So, okay, that's all, okay. So I'm not any good at that. Okay. So, so I make a motion that we accept the minutes of 11:29 and 12:13 meeting as presented. As written, thank you. Okay?
Second. I second the motion.
We have a second for it. All right. So just going down the line, Mark?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Sue?
Aye.
And I'm also a yes. And also thank you again, Sue, for your diligent work.
Makes life easy.
All right, we still have a few minutes. Let's do. I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put somebody on the spot, maybe. We have, we have, we have someone who has, you know, sent in a green card showing interest in joining the planning board. He and I have had a conversation and a few emails back and forth. I see him on here. Rob, if you would like to, if you just want to introduce yourself, you know, tell us a little bit about yourself, your interest in joining the planning board. It doesn't have to be long, just a couple of minutes. And it'd be, it'd be great to hear. So, Rob, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I moved to the town, I moved here about a year and a half ago, originally from Somerville. I'm an electrical engineer by trade, project manager as well, so for construction company. So I think planning board become a good opportunity for me to kind of hop in and help out and come up with some solutions for some of the challenges we have. You know, building some of these projects and kind of give another insight on it. I've traveled all over, so working and I'm glad to call Concord. Open to stay here for a very long time. That's pretty much it. I'm sorry I'm a cam yet, I have my laptop does, but not docking station. So I'll get a cam set up soon.
Thank you, Rob. Does anybody on the board have any questions for for Rob?
Welcome.
Thank you for volunteering. We've definitely welcome an additional member.
Yes, very much so. Elizabeth, I don't know if you want to just kind of run through what what the process be?
Yep. So at this point, the planning board just needs to put forth a recommendation to the select board that Rob be appointed to fill the unexpired term for the planning board. And then for Rob's knowledge, the process is, it's a two-step process through the planning board. I mean, through, to be appointed to the planning board through the select board, they will be, there'll be one meeting where you get nominated and then a second meeting where you get appointed. And then you will get a letter, an appointment letter, at which time you go to the town clerk and you get sworn in. And yeah, that's it. So if somebody on the planning board wants to make a motion to recommend that Rob Almeida be appointed to the unexpired term for the planning board, that's all I need.
I will do so. I make a motion to appoint Rob Almeida to the, to recommend the appointment of Rob Almeida to the select board for appointment to the planning board.
I'll second that. And then again, just going down the line, Mark?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So again, thank you very much, Rob. Appreciate you taking the time for our conversations earlier. And I'm glad you've decided to join.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Seeing as that we are now at past 7:10 and I see Rich there, so I think we have everybody for 59 Walden present. So I think we can, we can go ahead with this. So whomever is going to be the leading this on that side, please, please unmute yourself and the floor is yours.
Certainly. Richard Harrington, Harrington, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. You also able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So Linda, at the last meeting, the purpose here is just to kind of stop in and we've made the tour with everybody. And this picture that you see here is the result of all the comments compiled together. What you recall, we have a counterclockwise traveling back out to Walden Street. And we've made some adjustments on the outer edge. We previously presented a 25-foot setback from the edge of Wet Ones to the pavement. In speaking with Linda's comment about the compact space of the inside being too narrow and Tom Swaim's comment about it being potential vehicles coming off the edge of pavement as it turned, we went circle back to Dalian, the town engineering. And we are going to hold the 20-foot minute instead of 25. So we picked up five feet over here. And we're going to hold 25 feet from the river. So what we also are going to do is the existing two-foot stone trench that was on the backside, we're going to invite that back up to the new edge of pavement. And the rules say that we have to have the same storage in the new one as we do as the old. So the old one was two feet wide. And to match that, we're just going to make it three feet wide. And then we're going to proceed with basically just taking an ice cream scoop and carve out the old pavement, the gravel and the stone and put in a bio retention material per your details and to make that additional capacity improvement for runoff that currently she flows towards that area. And this is the updated circulation detail. Five, six, eight, nine previously were four compact spaces that were narrow to give more width. But what you see now is we'll angle the pavement as you get past the building at the bottom right. Have the entry aisle and then have 20 feet along the outside edge. We'll have a white stripe two feet off. So there'll be some safety measures there to address Mr. Swaim's comment. And it allows for a wider circulation and for more space as discussed previously with Ms. Miller. And then we took a space that was 18 over here and we moved it over to this side. So now you'd have three spaces on the entry, three on the exit aisle. And by removing all the spaces from the outside edge, that how we'd like to now save the tree again. So we'll be sensitive in that area where the root systems are. And and that's the update. So the goal tonight is to kind of say that if you're in favor of this, then we'll proceed with all the calc's and everything of with engineering and the comments of making all the stone water checklist, you know, we just want to minimize staff time. The architects here and also other parties of the professionals to talk about the area right behind the building regards to the electric vehicle charging station and the bicycle rack, et cetera. So I'll pause here. If there's any questions about the circulation improvements as we move forward.
Look good. Oh, good. Go ahead, Mark.
No, you're saying that I think it's an improvement. I like it.
I was just gonna ask to be clear on the sort of the end of the U where there is no parking spaces. So that's just, that's just asphalt that's going to drop off. There's no, there's no fence of any kind that's along there. To sort of dissuade cars from from either parking over the edge or or something like that.
So it's kind of duplicating what's out there today. So there'll be no fence. We had some bollards that maybe we'll replace up along the edge there. So it'll be a level surface all the way across.
Okay. Any other questions from the board members?
No, thank, thank you. I, I think it, it looks like a nice improvement and I'm hopeful there will be fewer scrape doors for drivers like myself.
Very good. Thank you for your comments. So I hope this, you know, so with that, I'll proceed with my requirements for stone water, things like that, which you don't have to bother the board with tonight. Is there any, Chris or Andy, did you want to mention or talk about anything additional?
Andy, I'll let you go if you want to just.
I don't really have anything. I know, Chris, you had said regarding the charging station.
Yep. So we, you know, we did hear you that it, that's something that's very important to the town. And so we will put in the electrical vehicle charging station. Andy, do you have an idea of where that's going, where you're, we are proposing that it go?
Yeah, right about where Rich is waving his little hand there. And maybe it actually goes a little bit, I'm gonna say, call it north on this plan, maybe to the top of that shaded area between sort of 113 and 14, a little bit further up, Rich. So maybe it can, you know, it can reach spot number one or 13, might, might be a logical spot. But I think in general, we want to keep it as close to the, the utility fence as possible, so it doesn't get hit by a plow or somebody driving. So, but basically I'm thinking kind of where that hand is right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for, for including that.
Thank you for the suggestion. We appreciate it.
And we have additional information on the, the noise level for the heat pumps and we'll clarify the height of the fencing around that in the, in the back also and provide that information to you and clarify the lighting specifications. And
Do you, do you want the information on the sound levels for the heating pumps now?
Is that, is that directed to us or?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, Nathan. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, sure.
Okay, so we did get, Andy, do you want to talk, talk about it? Because I don't, I'm not sure what some of those initials mean and mightn't be able to talk more intelligently about it if you have it in front of you. I have the numbers in front of me.
Sure, I, I'll try to. I mean, I'm, I'm not an acoustical engineer and but having dealt with acoustics for 30 something years, I, it's a science, but it's not a science. It's, it's perception, certainly. What's loud and what's not. So, so this, the unit, the air conditioning unit that's going to be back there, what's the heat pump that will provide heat and cooling will operate at a decibel level of 80. And I don't know if that sounds like a lot to you guys or not, but it's, I actually walked by another one today that was running and they're quite quiet. But the 80 is if you're putting your ear right next to the machine, if you're standing in the middle of the parking lot or at the back of the parking lot. Back of the parking lot, I wonder if you'll even hear it, to tell you the truth. Other examples, we, we looked up of, of, you know, what are other things, what are other things that we can all relate to? A lawnmower is 90. A shower, when you're in the shower, that's 70 decibels. Now, once again, I, I just, this part, my personal comment, it's, it's a science, but it's not a science. It has to do with distance. And so it's normal conversation is 60 that we're having right now. So I guess if you could imagine me talking at a loud voice and then you being at the back of the parking lot, yeah, you'd probably hear me a little bit. But I don't know, I hope that gives you a sense. It's very non-scientific, but it's, I would say it's not a loud piece of machinery back there.
And there will be a fence again surrounding that area. I don't, I don't know anything about this. And I don't know if that protects it or not from some noise.
It will, it'll, it'll keep, it'll contain the noise. And probably most importantly, where we've put the unit is so if it does direct sound, it directs it back towards the river. And, you know, it's definitely blocking the angle towards the adjacent residential neighbor. So I don't think he's even going to hear it.
And remind me, it's just the fencing around that, right? There's no, there's no like greenscaping or shrubs or anything that are going right immediately around that. I can't remember. I know we, we looked at the the design for that, but it, we don't have to cover right now, I guess.
There's a, there's a low or actually a high ground cover outside the fence, between the fence and the pavement. So it's, it's nothing too tall. It's just to cover the ground and keep anything from migrating.
Yeah. That might help with some sound absorption, I guess, as well. Good.
I think that was a general consensus of the, you know, the importance of locking it down just to minimize engineering review. So that's the big picture, you know, we weren't trying to remove any pavement and we were asked to reduce the pavement closest to the river by, by the natural resources commission. So I think we've struck a balance with that. And I appreciate your time tonight. We'll get everything back in with the positive recommendation, hopefully on the 21st of next month with the ZVA two days later on the 23rd of May. And we'll be at conservation on the 15th before your meeting. So we appreciate the leapfrogging back and forth just to get this to where we need to. Thank you.
Okay.
Could, could I, could I ask a question that's not pertinent to what we've discussed so far tonight?
Sure.
But it's something I've been thinking about and I don't know if it was answered previously or not. And that is during the construction process, where will the people working on the project be parking?
Mark, do you want to field that one?
I can do the best we can here. I believe that we will make arrangements to accommodate as many people on site as possible. People typically will work until about 2:00 PM. And I'm assuming if there is overflow, we will have to make arrangements to provide suitable parking.
Thank you. I, I think that would be useful to nail down in case we want to consider any conditions of regarding that parking in our final approval letter, should we approve this project. So thank you.
So I would think the majority would be able to park on site and make those arrangements.
So Linda, that, that is a standard condition. Construction workers and vehicles will not be allowed to park on any of the public roads or in the public parking lot off Walden. So part, the other standard condition is prior to any site work, they're required to provide a construction safety and staging plan that documents how the site will be utilized, if there's a construction trailer dumpsters. Porta potties where all of those will be placed, where lay down material will be, where people will be parking. If, if all of that cannot be accommodated on site, they will have to document where those vehicles will park. They, they may be able to work something with, you know, the church behind the property. And, you know, will walk over, but that would be all part of that standard condition regarding the construction sequencing and safety plan.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Yeah.
All right. If there is no other questions from board members or on the 59 Walden team, I think we can continue this to the March 21st meeting. And we can put this again at, it gets 7:10. And we don't need to vote for this one. So, all right.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Onto more administrative business. We have Sunnyside Lane definitive subdivision lot release.
I think I need to recuse myself.
I don't think so.
Oh, no? Okay, all right.
Since there is only four of you, I'm fairly sure that you do not have a financial interest in the Sunnyside Lane.
I don't have a financial interest, but I am in a butter. So I guess I am announcing that to the public so that they are not in doubt about whether I am doing something improper.
So I, I, even though you are in a butter, I think you can act impartially on a lot release which the applicant has provided their interim as-built plan, which has been reviewed by the engineering division and CMLP. There are asking that three out of the four lots be released. The last lot is sufficient as far as a performance guarantee to cover the cost for the remaining work. The engineering division has reviewed that itemized list from the engineer and does not have any issues with the three lot releases.
Okay, so do we? We just need to vote to approve the one, then, I guess? Or?
Wait, no, the, the release of the three, right?
That's what I, yeah, so we, okay. All right, I'll take a motion for, for that. Probably not Sue, I guess, in this case, wants to do it. Yeah, you're on mute, Mark. I think you're going for it, but you're on mute.
There we go. Is that better? Sorry. So I make a motion that we release slots one, two, and three from the Sunnyside Lane definitive subdivision.
Restrictive, release it from the restrictive covenant.
Release it from the restrictive covenant. Thank you, Elizabeth.
You are welcome.
I will second. All right, Linda?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. We already did that. So let's talk, yeah, let's talk about the public hearing, the annual town meeting public hearing presentations. I don't, like, I don't know that there's much to talk about them at the moment. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Nope. So I mean, I did meet with Linda today and we went over her presentation. And so she'll be finalizing her presentation. I don't, Sue and I met a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if there's something additional you need from me for yours. And then I know Nathan, you've been pretty under the weather and out of it. So we can, we can meet later this week or, or next week to go over your presentation. So I am finalizing the draft FAQs, which I will send to each of you for your article and other board members, if they want to provide their comments before March 7th. But hopefully to have the FAQs ready. You know, the, by, by the morning of March 7th, just so we can, we can run those off. So this, this really is whether there's any, anything additional you need from me. I know Linda, I'm gonna help her create a map for her presentation. And whether there was anything else the board members need from me. I, I, I am going back up to Vermont. So so I'll be like checking emails mornings, late afternoons and scheduling time with, with any of you to go over things. I can, you know, create a Zoom meeting. But that's, so this is just kind of like the final, you know, the final update before you guys, you know, finalize what you need to do for the March 7th meeting.
Yeah, sounds good.
So, anything?
Can I take two seconds? I don't want to hold things up, but I know there's been a lot of discussion about the Hanscom Field North Field project. And I can give everybody if they wanted a two-second update on that.
Well, that was, yes, let's do that under.
Oh, I thought we were, I thought we were to planning board liaison. No, we're not there.
Not yet.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, Elizabeth, I'll try to get with you later this week so we can go over over my presentation.
And then Sue, I don't know if you need anything else from me.
Thought you were done with that.
I, I, yes, except that I had a very busy two weeks and I have not had a chance to try to work through my presentation with updates. So I have nothing to request at this time and I hope that I will get something together real soon.
Okay, yeah. I mean, any, any, any time? Okay, yeah, I mean, I need, I need, anytime. This week or next week, that that's fine. I did want the board to know, so. The public hearing is at the hearing room at the townhouse. And just so you know. That same, that same day at five P M. Is a community forum on cellular coverage in town. It is supposed to go from five to six fifteen. So I just wanted everybody to know. That don't, you know, you you don't necessarily have to panic when you get there and there might be a lot of people there. But so just wanted you to know, there is.
Of course, we want a lot of people for our hearing now, don't we?
That's right. So there, but there is a community forum starting at five on March seventh. Regarding cellular coverage in town.
That's being, that's being run by the select board, right?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Carol, I do, I do see your hand up. I I want to give you a second to make a statement or something. I just want to make sure that it's. Is it related to the? Our question about the public hearing? I I just don't want to get into the content of. Of the actual warrant articles at this point when there's an opportunity at the. Oh, you put your hand down.
No, no, I did that, sorry.
Oh. So Carol, if you want to unmute yourself briefly.
Yeah, sure. So I was just curious in regards to, I I saw the warrant come out and I didn't see that it covered. You know, what areas of town the combined businesses? And I know you gave me that in the Z B A. I mean, the zoning bylaw, Elizabeth. You know, the commercial districts and then the limited districts and such. I just think that you should make it apparent to. To people in Concord, like what this covers, right? And I'm still confused and I've been at your planning board meetings for a year now, right? You know, what's in and what's out. I'm 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 clear on the major areas, but I, you know, I was just looking. You mentioned that, you know, it covers limited business districts, two, three, and seven. And it covers Concord Center. And I was like, okay, well, what is Concord Center Business District? Well, what is that? Is that Main Street? Is that Walden Street? Is that Concord Market? You know, I think people need to know, like, I'd like to know, like, what we're voting on, right? And. You know, and one oh six Main Street, which is limited business district. Seven, I couldn't even find that like on Google Maps. It looks like it's the green grass in front of the library, right? So. I was kind of.
Yeah, I think it's the boathouse, but.
The boathouse, but I don't even know where the boathouse is.
The the boathouse on Main Street?
The South Bridge Boathouse.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that that way down there, okay. So, you know, and then this whole thing came up with the Best Western that, you know, they're gonna put affordable housing there, or, you know. Temporary affordable housing, and then paparazzi is moving out. So it's, you know, that's a huge area that could be developed for affordable housing or development in general. And I was wondering, is that? Covered in this combined business?
So generally, the the, I mean, it, this will be up to up to Nathan, but generally. The the board's not changing any of the districts or. That allow or permit the combined business residence, so that's staying the same. So generally, they they discuss the warrant article and things that are changing and not. Not things that aren't changing. So, you know, this is something I can discuss with Nathan on. On, I'm, I'm, I'm from a, from a. It may be something that can go in the F A Q. I'm I'm reluctant to have the board. Insert something in the presentation regarding where it's allowed when they're not changing anything, because that creates more confusion.
No.
So they're they're not, they're not, this warrant article does not change where a combined business residence is permitted.
No, maybe in the explanation of the warrant. I mean, you go on and on and on about, you know, a bunch of other things, but. Like, nobody knows what it means. Like, if if you ask the average Concordian, what is combined business residence? Where does that apply? I I I'll tell you, like, nobody would know.
Okay, so that may be something that we can put in the F A Q, Nathan, and I can work on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and just in regards to the paparazzi and the Best Western area, is that included in this or not?
If it's included now, it's included. It it, as I said, the districts aren't changing, so.
What district is that?
My head.
Yeah, not off the top of my head. Give me two seconds, I could tell you. All of those Best Western, Paparazzi.
Probably to the gas station.
The gas, yeah, from, well, six, six seventy six, which is the little office building. Or is that the gas station?
I think the gas station's the first thing, isn't it? As you, as you're coming toward the rotary.
So it kind of looks like limited business based on Concord G I S.
Yeah, it's limited business one.
Right, is that, is that covered under the combined business one? Because when you said to me, is it?
So. So you can go to the table of uses and it'll tell you exactly where it's permitted. So combined business residents. Nope, two, three, and seven.
Right, okay, so. Is there any way to include it? It seems like a great opportunity to develop some affordable housing.
So you then would like to have. Not only affordable housing, but also a business use combined in the same building?
Yeah, I mean, it, I mean, the Best Western, the gas station, paparazzi, the the. Whatever that is, the Thai food restaurant or something. Those are all businesses, right? But there's a lot of empty parking lot and you could go up thirty eight feet or whatever in that area. So.
I I hear where you're coming from on that. I think, I think. It's a fine proposal, but I think it should be done separately. From.
Not only that, it would have to be because it would be out of scope for this year's warrant. To expand the application of the warrant article. And I will also point out that the changes of this year's warrant article only apply. To developments of ten or fewer units. Any developments of eleven or more units are remain unchanged under the zoning by law.
I don't think that's correct.
So you can, I I can check with the town moderator. But I think incorporating an a new district where it is currently not permitted. Would be outside the scope of the warrant article.
Ah, okay, I thought it was permitted today. It's not permitted today.
It is currently, it is not, no.
Ah, okay, but I think, you know, on the current, on the over ten usage. I that is changing, isn't it? That that you're changing that. It doesn't have to be twenty percent, it only has to be ten percent? Or ten percent, half of them have to be S H I and the other one could be a hundred to a hundred and twenty, or is that what it says today?
So currently, it does not specify. It's, it's just. For four or more, it's twenty percent. So to Sue's comment. Anything eleven or more is still at twenty percent.
Right. So in the zoning by law, you're changing that, right?
It was twenty percent before, it will be twenty percent after, if the zoning article should happen to pass.
Right, but aren't you saying fifty percent of the affordable units have to be eighty percent? And then the other ones have to be a hundred to a hundred and twenty percent, so only. Fifty percent of the twenty percent, which is ten percent, is going towards affordable S H I. So isn't that different?
Well, since it doesn't say at all now, then.
Okay, so, great, great question.
Ah, they should come up at the hearing, as Nathan said at the beginning of this, yeah.
Well, I think you should address that, because I think you're misrepresenting the situation.
I don't think anybody is misrepresenting anything. I think it's a great question and. I will work with Nathan to make sure it's a great question. But for you to consistently and constantly say the board is misrepresenting things is is inaccurate.
Okay, then how about?
No, I will, I'll work with Nathan and we'll get together and we'll make sure that that question. Either gets answered in the pre- presentation or part of, that might be, it might be a little bit long for the presentation. It might be better suited for the F A Q.
Well, I just think if you're gonna stand up and say nothing has changed when something.
No, you were, you were asking about. Was allowed and where it's not allowed. That is not changing. No, that's, that was my statement.
I agree with that.
And thank, that's what I said. I didn't say other things were not changing. We were talking about where it's allowed and where it's not allowed.
Okay, well, I agree with that, and that's wonderful that you'll explain that. I guess what I was reacting to was Sue's statement that nothing has changed in the twenty percent. Of the zoning law, whatever it is now, that twenty percent will be affordable housing now, when in the new. Zoning article, that has changed. It's still twenty percent, but only half is going to affordable housing. That is different. From what it says today. Is it not?
And and Carol, we we hear you. Appreciate your input on that. We will address that. Hopefully, either, like Elizabeth said, in the F A Qs or at the public hearing in the presentation. And if we do not, in either of those by that point. I very much expect that you will ask that question at the at the hearing. But I feel like it's probably more productive to address that question at the hearing than it is here when there's. You know, four of us and a few other people listening in. But again, I hear what you're saying, you know, we will take that. Into account for, like I said, for the F A Qs or for the presentation or both. And we'll go from there.
Yeah, I I just think that if you're gonna stand up in front of people and make. A a presentation and say nothing has changed when it has, you should really stand up and say. This is what's changed and this is what people are gonna vote on, because people won't understand that. And if you just say, hey, nothing's changed, well.
The very fact that we're having a warrant article is indicative that there is something changing. We will describe what that change is, and if we do not answer it to your satisfaction at that point in time. Feel free to ask the question again for us to clarify further if need be at that point. But I I just, I don't think we're being productive at this point in time. But like I said, we we hear you loud and clear in what you're looking for, so we will attempt. To do our best to address that before then and during the the public hearing.
Great, I appreciate that. Appreciate the clarity.
Thank you. All right. And now, Mark, we can go to.
Sorry, I I thought we were there. I apologize. Okay, so.
Regarding Hanscom, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so anyways, and and if you don't want to hear it, I'll take two seconds. As you know, there's a bunch of. Noise about the North Field project, okay? It's a massive project, hundred and twenty million dollar project, five hundred thousand square feet of hangar space. You know, not enough. F B O, it's privately held. We don't know what it means, other than it means probably a lot more aircraft. So there's been a bunch of letters written. By a lot of different groups and individuals. The H VAC position on it is, and it's being represented this way by Michael Barrett, our senator, is that. We can't just stop it. That's selfish. You can't just say we don't want it. That won't work, okay? But what we're saying is that we would like to have it. Be a non fossil fuel facility. Which means no jet fuel at all, okay? I mean, we are Darth on that. And part of the. The issue here is the environmental aspects of jet fuel. And you know, what that means is that is planes fly over everything. So our compromise is to try to present them. With an ultimatum, if you will, that in order for this to go forward, it should be non fossil fuel. Aircraft only that are hanged there. We don't know if they can do that or not, but that could be in effect killing the project. But we'll see. There's a couple more steps to go through. But we can't just say we don't want it, because that's not gonna, not gonna happen. Massport will will put it through. Anyways, that's the bottom line. Okay?
Mark, I have a question about it. So who? So Masspol basically oversees Hanscom, but like. Who makes the final approval determination on the project itself?
Well, there's a bunch of different parties involved in it. Right now, it's an environmental study. It's M E P A, okay? Which is a mass environmental protection agency, and they're they're going through a three step process, okay? Where they look at this to see what's gonna happen. And there's all ki- all kinds of environmental problems besides the whole jet fuel thing, okay? There's gonna be more tarmac there, which means more, you know. You know, less ground space, okay? There's a bunch of things going on there. There's two separate pieces of property, one of which Massport owns. One of which was owned by the Navy and this private company bought it, okay? They want to buy the Massport property, combine the two. It's a massive thing. It's, I don't know, like seventy two acres. It's a very big parcel. They'll have, Massport will have to give them access to Hanscom, because you have to apply for that, okay? So there's a bunch of steps going on here. Ultimately, it's probably gonna be the governor that decides whether it goes through or not, okay? But Massport has to sell them the property. They have to approve giving them access, what's called a through the, through the fence agree arrangement. Where they can gain access to the actual, you know, landing strips and stuff, the runways, thinking, okay? So, but, you know, it's a, as I said, it's a very large project. The town of Bedford has some input in it because one of the parcels is within the town of Bedford. Okay, so they'll have some input in it in terms of all the agencies that will be looking at that, okay?
Well, I guess that was gonna be my next question. So the parcels themselves, if they're partially in Bedford. In Concord, but.
None of them are in.
Hanscom overall is, covers also part of Lexington, so does Lexington also have?
No, in terms of land only, Bedford is the only one that has a, you know, a position in that, okay? You know, there are four towns involved in overseeing the Hanscom operations, Lincoln, Concord, Lexington, and Bedford, okay? And you know, for the most part, it's a, it's a boring deal, okay? We meet once a month and we make sure that. They aren't having regular commercial flights in and out of there. You see, there's there's three airports. That Massport is responsible for, okay? Logan, Worcester, and Hanscom. They've designated Logan and Worcester. As commercial aircraft, okay? They designated Hanscom. As general aircraft only, okay? No commercial flights in and out of there. People have tried to do it in the past. They can't do it. That's one of the things that we watch for is to make sure that's not gonna be allowed. We watch to make sure there's no FedEx or anything going in there, because, you know. That shouldn't happen. We don't have a lot of control of what goes on there, because almost all the flights in and out of there are regulated by F A A. Everybody wants to know about the noise. The noise, we monitor every single aircraft that goes in and out of there. I get a noise report on, okay? We know what they are. People say, oh, there's more planes going in and out of there. Sometimes, yes, sometimes, no. You know, it's a big airport, though. There's no question about it. If you drive over there and look at these, what are called F B Os, which are. The the people that charter their Gulf streams out to other people. You know, there's a ton of them over there, you know, signatures of the lead one, and they've got a ton of aircraft over there. And these things are big. These aren't little. You know, Piper Aircraft, okay? There's not a whole lot we can do about that, but we hope that this environmental aspect of this will at least slow it down. We'll see.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yeah, thank you for that update.
Right, whatever. If you have any questions, let me know. I'm, you know, involved in it, obviously. Thanks, thanks for the time.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, are there any other liaison uh? Reports or uh Elizabeth, do you have any? Updates?
Well, I have a slight update. I was not able to attend the last West Concord Advisory Committee meeting, which they had specially in an afternoon, but I did watch. Recording, they got and a, a sort of initial presentation. On the new proposal for affordable housing in the Junction Village site, which had been designated. For development as assisted living through the Grantham Group, but as you know, that fell through. There is, are now early stages of discussions with an organization that had previously applied. Um but had not been chosen in the initial round, who are now coming forward again to talk about. Um a workforce housing proposal for that area, but it's so, such early days that there isn't really any. Detailed information available.
And Elizabeth, it looked like you were nodding no when I mentioned any town planner updates.
I have, I have nothing, I've been away and I have nothing to add.
Okay, um. If there are no, we have no other bits of administrative business, um.
That's it.
I think that's, that's it, so we can call it uh seven fifty-four. End of uh planning board meeting of February twenty-first. And everybody enjoy the, what is supposed to actually be some snow coming up, especially for you, Elizabeth, if you're going uh. So we're supposed to get almost a foot.
I, I, I am, we're supposed to get quite a bit up there and uh. So far, I've only done like four hundred and fifty miles on my sled, so I got uh.
Careful.
I got a lot, uh got a lot. I, I am very careful, thank you. That's why riding midweek is always better, so I'm excited.
Good.
I hope you feel better, Nathan.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, all.
Night, good night, everybody.